I think you've written some other, what's the pledge allegiance to the moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have roll call.
Commissioner Ann Sargi.
Here.
Commissioner Reston.
Present.
Chairman Bonick.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Sodis Little.
She called and said she'll be a little late.
Okay. Commissioner Rattenbach.
Not sure where she is.
Commissioner Lotner.
Present.
Thank you. So that brings us to public comment. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on then to the purpose of the meeting, to discussion of potential action for the courthouse.
Let me just start with a brief overview. What you have in your packet is correspondence from our treasurer, John Gallagher, and John, I, and Michelle, and Jen have met numerous times on this issue. So while John's speaking, I think he has captured the pulse of all of us on what the options are for the financing part of it. You also have recommendations from Kirsten, and she's here to answer the question, a spreadsheet that's a little larger. The original was a little tough to print out, hard to see out of eight and a half by 11, so I thought you'd appreciate that. And I asked Gary O'Connor to be here too, to answer any questions you have about the current system or what the options are in terms of repairs to the system. I think you knew from my update, we had another heat pump go out recently. I believe that's, is that four or five that are currently out?
Five.
Chair, is that five of them, counting the prosecutor's office?
Yes.
That works sometimes, sometimes it doesn't. So anyway, Gary's here first, but this is obviously a very large decision that you have to make. And I thought it'd be helpful for you to know right up front what the financing options are, because several of you have asked about that. Can we do this project? Can we do the roof next door? Can we continue with extra MERS payment? Do we have flexibility in case other projects come forward? If there's a unique situation, everything. So at this time, John, you want to just review your memo here?
Yes, sir. Are you all going to receive CP credits for this today? I put this together and basically wanted to just outline what our options are as a county. They're similar in nature, however, they each have their own nuances and are going to be executed just a little bit differently. First off, if we were to pay cash and take from our fund balance for 2019 to 2020, it would put a burden on the county finances. We would be able to sustain it, however, we may have to make decisions on other projects and their merit, whether or not they have to be executed during that fiscal year. Additionally, if we were to do the pay cash, it is plausible that I would have to borrow to make my settlement payments for taxes in 2019 and 2020, depending on the payment schedule required by the contractors. So number one, I wanted to just basically show, and this is not a recommendation, but for your information, with our current taxable value of $2.8 billion, we'd be looking at a levy similar to senior services that would bring in roughly $700,000. The intent of presenting that information is simply, that's what it would take to recoup and rebuild our fund balance over the course of five years. And so we're not going out for a millage, and I don't think that's the intent, but nonetheless, that's what it would take, five years, $700,000, to build our fund balances up to where we are today.
John?
Yes, ma'am.
I made a clarification. So are you saying that if we were to pay cash for the project, then the subsequent five years would require this additional levy to the taxpayers to replace the funding that would be missing from the general fund? Is that what you're saying?
It is not required, but that's what it would take for us to build our fund balances
Okay.
to where they are today. There's other means, which cost-cutting measures.
I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page as far as the thought process in this first part.
It's not a recommendation, it's just simply giving you guys the parameters of which we've got to work with in the finance departments. Some of you, if not all of you, have heard of the limited tax general obligation bond. This is the most simplest form and the most structured form. I put this as number two, and these are not in any priority order. But nonetheless, this is a non-voted and non-callable bond that at three and a half million dollar project, interest rates would be roughly 2.5 percent. With that in perspective, right now, my money markets are earning about 2.5 percent. So in all fairness, it's a good rate. Historically, when we went and looked at bonding for the 9-1-1 project, this falls right in line with that. The repayment over five years, the annual debt obligation, first year would be $87,000, and then roughly $750,000 for the remaining years. The interest cost on this project would be $310,000. I'm going to go through each one of these and then I'll kind of backtrack, so just bear with me. With a general obligation bond, this is a bond that goes out for proposals. You just send this out in the public market and somebody's going to buy it. In order to do that, we have to have underwriting. That cost, the issuance cost, is going to be about $60,000, and that's going to be a very tight budget. So on top of the numbers that you have today, I wanted to take into consideration the interest costs and also the issuance costs for the financing. These are all costs that we're going to incur, one way or the other. As this is a non-voted instrument, our electors, our citizens, have an opportunity, after we post this, because we have to publicly post this in general circulation in the enterprise, there's a 45-day period in which they can collect signatures to mandate that we put this on a ballot for a vote. Now, a commercial loan is the best way to describe this next one, but it's more of a, it's what's called in the marketplace as a private placement bond. This means that we go to one institution and they fund us. Still has the same underwriting, still has the same structure. However, we have a little bit more flexibility because we can ask for callable bonds. And difference between callable bond and a non-callable bond is if we deem that we have some extra funds in year three of the project, we can make that prepayment and reduce our debt. With that comes an opportunity cost. That opportunity to negotiate with the private sector is going to be to increase our interest rate to 2.65 to 2.86, depending on the product type that we use. If we use a non-callable, it'll probably be around 2.65. A callable bond would be 2.86. Similarly, the non-callable note schedule would be $77,000 year one, $775,000 for the remaining five years. The interest cost between the two products would be between $340,000 and $315,000. For a non-callable, the county would need to still hire bond councils, as I stated, and we would have to do this public notice still. So we would have to present that to the enterprise and the constituents still have the 45 days. The fees to the banking institution would be around $2,000, and the underwriting fees would be less than a general obligation bond, and it'd be about $30,000. Now, with a non-callable, we can prepay, but there's a penalty outlined in section four here. And we keep, after year four, we can do it, but there's a 3 percent penalty. Now, the last two is where I'm stretching the boundaries of traditional financing, and I'm asking not only our banking institution, our financial advisor, Benzinski, and Miller Canfield, our bond counsel, to really kind of think outside the box. Because this is a construction and improvement to this building, we're not going to need the full bond upfront. I don't need to sit on a debt of $3.5 million and pay the interest on $3.5 million. So I'm looking, and I need more time to discover, you know, what our opportunities are. But basically, a commercial line of credit is similar to a private placement bond, but it'd be considered a non-revolving line of credit. This is something that has been done in the industry, but I'm not familiar with entirely. I don't know what the rates are, I won't know those rates until next week. Additionally, I conference with Miller Canfield, which is bond counsel, that I think did the JL bonds. They did do the Northport Sewer. And we reviewed the possibility of a private placement bond issued as callable with the ability to take draws. They say it's legal to do, it's just not normal. I'm not a normal guy, and I'm trying to find a way for us to do this with the least cost. The above noted traditional bonds, whether it be private placement or the general obligation, are the higher cost, with fixed costs of interest between $340,000 and $310,000. Additionally, depending on which way we go, we're going to have legal fees and underwriting fees between $60,000 and $30,000.
I have a question, Joe.
Yes, ma'am.
With a commercial line of credit, usually that requires some sort of collateral. So what does that look like in this case?
For instance, if we were to use our banking institution that we deal all of our checking with, on average, we have anywhere between $10 million and $20 million throughout the year.
By a signature without collateral?
So it could be as simple as a pledge based on simply that.
John, let me ask you this, because this is my experience. When I was in Charlie, we passed a bond for something almost $8 million.
Mm-hmm.
But the way we worked it with our bond counsel, we took payment the first year, we didn't take, because of cash flow and the fees and everything, we took the second payment in year three, the third payment in year five. So even though we sold the bonds at once and had the interest rates guaranteed, we didn't want, because we didn't need the money upfront.
Correct.
We actually sold the specific bonds at very specific times. So there's a bond sale in year one, we had a bond sale in year three, we had a bond sale in year five.
And that is, that's the traditional way to do this, but because of the timeframe of this project, maybe only 18 months.
Yeah.
I've got to micro-manage those draws and payments. So that's why I'm looking at these different opportunities, because we don't have 12 months between each draw.
Yeah.
It's going to be, you know, maybe three months.
But you're saying that may be a possibility, you were that way?
Yeah, I'd say it is legal, it is a matter of negotiating with our banking institution. The current person that I need to talk to is out of the office until Monday. So anyway.
Commissioner Lotner has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Couple of quick questions. Miller Canfield, was that Benzinski before or?
Nope, no, they're two different entities. Miller Canfield is more.
Is that the one we used for the?
Yeah, what you do, when you do a bond, I can tell you, because I've experienced, you hire a legal counsel and then you hire a bond agent. They're two separate entities.
Oh, so was Benzinski a legal?
Benzinski was the bond agent, Miller Canfield was a legal.
Okay, okay. So it is the same company then, okay.
They're two separate companies, but they work together.
Gotcha.
They need both.
Okay.
And they usually, and they're never the same company.
No.
Gotcha, all right. So your other option, you said, would be to take cash from fund balance in the next two years. And I understand that you said that would be a burden, you said it would be a burden on other projects. So what other projects were you talking about? MERS for one?
MERS, definitely. Unfortunately, because we've drained our capital projects, any unforeseen instances where we need to make an immediate repair, those would be questionable.
Okay.
Obviously staffing, software purchases, you know, large ticket items, 911, 901. So it is not my recommendation to go that route when we have multiple different venues that we, if you choose to pursue this project, to fund us and give us the flexibility to maintain our current operations and to maintain the level of service.
Suppose we did go that route and just tried to pay cash, at least for the first year, and even try to stretch the project out over three years, if that's possible. There would be a burden on some of the other projects, such as MERS, and if we were aware of that, we'd take a risk on anything unknown. But we do have good insurance, so hopefully we'd be okay there. You said you would have to borrow, like say, for the settlement of taxes. So how would that borrowing look? What would that look like?
It's bonding, basically. So I would have to issue a bond, and I'd have to pay bond agent and an underwriter with a promissory note to repay those out of the collections. With that, obviously, the county is, in a sense, going backwards because the interest that we've earned on those bonds are going to pay for, are coming from the interest that we earn on the delinquent notes.
Right.
So we kind of are at a standstill for a while until we can rebuild that fund balance.
Yeah, I understand that. And while it could be uncomfortable, I think, and maybe it could take a few years to catch up, say, and be where we were truly comfortable, we've really had a couple unfortunate years here.
Mm-hmm.
They've been very unusual. For years, we had, we knew the storm was coming, and we had a lot of nickel and dime type stuff, but we've really been hit these last couple of years. So hopefully, this is it.
But we've, in my opinion, gotten to a position that if we go any further down, not only is it going to affect the level of service, it's going to affect our bond rating, and a burden is putting it lightly. I mean, we're going to have to really micromanage our cash. And to refund the costs of this project, even though you're stating, oh, it's stretched over three years, I think we're going to incur more costs if we do it that way. And maybe the, our consultants can speak to that. But it took us five years to recoup last time. We drew down the funds to the point where we're talking about. And so under the current conditions, if I were to make a recommendation, it would be not to take the cash.
That's fine.
Because five years from now is, we may have many things come before us that we need to address.
Commissioner Reston.
John, with the commercial line of credit, I think what you just said is we have between $10 and $12 million that we could more than likely access with a signature as of today. Okay? With a line of credit, if we were to go forward with this particular project, I would think that every year over the course of the next couple of years, we would find ourselves with funds available through the general fund or through the DTR fund. To me, a line of credit makes a little bit more sense. This project is going to span over the course of 18 months.
Correct.
Which means that we would only be charged interest on the actual funds that we withdraw from that line of credit, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if we find ourselves in year one where we have $50,000 that we could put on this line of credit, that reduces the principal amount.
Correct.
Likewise, if we have to take a little bit more money because we're in the second year, whatever, we look at our fund balance and see what our parameters are, as long as we meet our other obligations. We only take that money that we need to satisfy that debt, correct?
Correct. And that's the flexibility that I'm asking for.
And the line of credit does not have to be a five-year term, correct?
No.
It can expand to whatever we negotiate with the lending institution.
Correct.
Okay.
If we were to negotiate it, I mean, because it's a non-revolving line of credit, it'd have to have a fixed term.
Sure, okay.
So we have to.
Ten years, usually.
We'd have to identify that.
Right.
And the government regulations for this are a little bit more strict than the commercial side.
Okay, well.
So I can answer, I can find out what the limitations are, but.
And the cost also of this line of credit, a lot different than the other options that you've made available to us today. We would be eliminating, I would think, some of these costs, is that true?
I would anticipate that there would be a higher interest rate, but lower cost of issuance.
Right. But that also will depend on our ability to pay that line of credit off.
Correct.
And that would be the goal, to pay that line of credit off as soon as possible. Even if we had to reduce, I'm not saying not pay the extra on MERS, but instead of paying $150,000 on MERS, maybe we do $75,000 on MERS and $75,000 in addition to our obligation on that line of credit. It would then be a win-win.
I'd say with that scenario, I mean, we're anticipating, if we were to proceed with the project, that we would have debt obligation starting year one.
Sure.
So we would already be budgeting for $750,000 to go towards that debt obligation. So.
Personally, I think we need to look into this a little bit further, so that we have.
These last two are, I need more time.
Sure.
And I think that this is going to give us the more, the best flexibility and suit our needs at the least cost.
My first wish would be that we could pay for it cash today. We can't. It doesn't sound like we can. And still have the flexibility that we need at the county level to provide the services to our citizens and to fulfill our obligations. So with that said, I like the option that a commercial line may, that flexibility and the ability to pay it back and to be able to make those decisions annually.
And it may end up looking more like number five.
That's a fantastic question.
You know, but nonetheless, it's going to have the same structure as a line of credit. But it will be formally accepted by the Department of Treasury and bond counsel. This line of credit, the commercial line of credit, is something new to me. Bobby Benzinski said that it's not available to us, but our financial institution says that it is available to us. So I'm looking further into that. But number five, I put as a four-star, and that would be, you know, my recommendation, where we look at doing a private placement with a lending institution that allows us to take draws and they're callable, meaning it acts as a line of credit, but it looks like a bond.
Commissioner Wessel.
We have talked over the course of the summer about paying cash.
Yes, sir.
So there, so a sixth option could be seeing if we could come up with half of, half of the cost in paying cost and reducing some budgets and then borrowing our line of credit for another half of it, some combination.
I think, I mean, the clerk, Soffis, and myself were prepared to, for this year, take $750,000 from the general fund and $750,000 from DTR if we were to go through this before we got the bids, is that?
Yes, that's fair. When we were estimating the cost, before we had estimates for the roof, or bids for the roof, for the bids for this project, we did talk about that split.
So to answer your question, yes, we were prepared and kind of had it in our minds that that may be an expectation. So yeah, I believe we can do a combination of financing and cash payments. It's just to the matter of our advisors here to tell us when we need the money and we could, you know, make that determination now.
You know, you've been patient with us, and we debated this a lot, and hopefully after tonight, we'll have a plan. But I would favor the combination. I would favor we're entering our budget process, seeing how much we could come up with in that borrow and put that with what we need to borrow and get the project done.
Well, that's why we thought it would make sense for John to discuss the financial options, give you time to ask all your questions, have the group here present the bids and the options, and then have a discussion afterwards on how you wish to proceed. Get that next sentence, everybody.
And John, you would have your numbers on four and five option next week.
Yes, the individual will be back from vacation Monday, so I can reach out and clarify those options. I can get a memo out to Chet and have it distributed.
Well, obviously, this is a major decision, and what we talked about, Kirsten, help me if I'm wrong here, because we talked about, there's a drop dead date. We have to make a decision at some point. So when is that? So still stay in schedule, because the contract is all very busy and so forth, all the equipment. And really, and you're saying it's July 31st, right?
Yes.
So with John, if you want John to explore that, we do have a little window here. Today's the 16th, so basically have two weeks. But I think we're all in agreement, including John, Michelle, and I, that really need to make a decision on this, if we're going to do it by July 31st.
And also to reflect, some of these options are going to take more time than others. Chet, I don't know if he could speak to how long it usually took from start to finish, from inception to the actual issuance.
It depends if your financial agent or your attorney are going to go out for bids or just negotiate with a single unit of lender. That makes a difference, and there's pros and cons on both.
Correct.
But usually, it's a couple of months. So it's not like you make a decision, we're going to get the money here. If you go with the bonds, you have to do, well, it's 45-day posting, right?
Forty-five day posting.
So there's 45 days right there. Then the bonds have to go on the market and be sold. That will take one day. And what, we don't really sell the bond, we actually had a, the bonds would do it, bid it.
And what, we don't really sell the bond, we actually had a, the bonds would do it, bids at four o'clock, the agent would review them, we'd have a special meeting that day to approve the bond sale. But there is, let's say, at least two months, play it safe.
I, I'd put it at sixty days before we can get the cash. In either scenario, you know, best case is that on sixty days we would have some funds available to pursue this project.
Now, we could go with Ty Wester's suggestion too. Let's say the first payment's due fifty-eight days. We probably could come up with the cash for the first payment without the bond as long as John has authority to proceed and start the process. So that part could be worked out. So it doesn't mean we have to wait sixty days.
No, no, but I, I'm just trying to be as transparent as possible.
Yeah, it, it doesn't happen overnight.
Right. Well, I, I apologize for being a little tardy today, so maybe I missed something at the beginning of the conversation. But if we went ahead and paid our, our own funds for this year, and could we then apply for the commercial line of credit in October and not, or the private bond placement?
Mm-hmm.
And do it for a lot less money?
Plausibly. You know, and, you know, and at that point, you know, market indicators say that the rates are going to go down, so that might be an advantageous route to go.
Well, we would be asking for less, so we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't be incurring as much expense.
Correct. But there's still going to be the fixed costs of underwriting that are going to change.
Some of those fixed costs would be the same. The interest rates may-
The interest rates may vary, you know, depending on the timing.
Right.
But you're absolutely correct. If we decide to proceed and for this first installment or mobilization, as they're referencing it, we pay cash for, we could pursue financing options later this year.
I was just wondering, when we, when we went through the finances before, and you, you gave us, you know, how, how much you had to borrow or use to pay off, you know, the, your, the obligations. The most that was ever needed was around five million.
Mm-hmm.
And if we paid for this, we would get down around four million. So we're, we're, we were talking about a million that you, we may have to borrow on in that case. And, and what you're saying is that if we were in that case, then we would be, we would have a lower bond rating, we would have, and it would cost us that much more?
No, well, and that's just my fund, that's not, well, the DTR fund, but also the general fund would be drawn down equally. This was a split between the two funds. So yes, it would bring my, my DTR fund down roughly to four million dollars, which puts me at the cusp of, you know, whether or not I have to borrow or not.
Right.
And the thing is, is I don't, that, that number is at the peak during the year after settlement. I may not have a million dollars in the bank, and that's enough for operations, you know, for general disbursements, adjustments and so on and so forth. So at the high point, you know, I have six million dollars in there, you know, or seven million dollars in there. If we draw that down, my concern is after settlement, I'll have, I won't have any operating money, and I may have to borrow from the general fund. And because we've drawn down the general fund and because of the time of year, and April is when I pay out, that's one of the lowest points the general fund is because we don't collect until July.
Right.
So it's just a timing issue that concerns me. To draw down the funds that fast, we could plausibly do it, not my recommendation though. Not for the entire thing. I think, I think reasonably, you know-
Because I mean, if we're, we're looking at these things, we're, we're adding a significant cost to this. The project is already too expensive, and now we're going to just add another, you know, possibly four-hundred thousand.
And that's why I'm entertaining the, the last two items as my recommendation.
So now we're making a four-million dollar project instead of three-point-five. And so that's why I'm concerned about that. It just, you know, we, we do have the money, we don't want to put ourselves in a, in a financial bind, but yet, we, we, we just create more expense instead. And, and I don't really want to, want to do that myself because it, it all just comes out of the tax dollars and it, it just makes it harder to recuperate to, to me over the time.
My point was is that, you know, for, for the sake of the tax revolving funds, you either incur the costs on the project, or I incur the costs in the tax revolving fund. Because either way, we may have to borrow, so it's, it's just a matter of where you're going to place that expenditure. If you want to look at it from a broad spectrum.
Right. But, but the one is we will, and the other one is we may, and that's the difference that I see. You know, and, and, and then, and, and the may could be significantly less.
Depends on how four, five-
But it all, yeah, but we just don't know.
No, no.
But, but the one we know is fixed and would be, you know, four-hundred thousand, or whatever it comes out to be.
Well, and like, if we do a combination, as Commissioner Wester said, you know, that would significantly reduce, and, and Commissioner Rehmann, our interest expenditures. And if we follow Commissioner Rush and, and try to do more of a line of credit, we could essentially net zero this, because my earning interest rate is equal to that of the borrowing rate. So my hope and goal is that we can cash flow this through either number four or number five.
That wouldn't be ideal.
Yes.
Originally, when we thought the roof was eight-hundred thousand.
Right.
And we thought this was two-point-five to three, we came up with a plan. It was tight.
Right.
But we did come up with a plan that we felt we could achieve our goals of not borrowing, pay off MERS, still having some flexibility for other projects.
Right. So once we've won another million and a half, never-
That, that's where lies my, my concern.
All right, well, I think that's-
Commissioner Wester. What's that? I want some other questions.
Yeah, so any questions about the financial options?
Thank you, John, I think you presented that very well.
Yeah, very good.
All right. Gentlemen and ladies, please come forward.
Before you get started, would you please take your eraser out and start erasing some of these numbers?
White out.
White out, or that'll work.
Thanks, everybody, for giving us this opportunity again. I would like to just kind of set forth how I wanted to talk about these, the comparisons that we've provided for you, but start by saying that when we began working on the RFP to do the design for this project, we were looking at a spreadsheet that accomplishes theoretically the same renovation that we have proposed, with the exception of changing it from VAB boxes all throughout to chilled beam. The reason for that is because it will require less maintenance and will live, will be more effective, you know, in terms of providing comfort for occupants. The total budget at that point was roughly three-point-three million. And I am happy with the result that we've got here. We had a lot of interest in this project and were able to deliver six bids. The people that were bidding went through a lot of work. We did a number of walkthroughs. We talked to a number of different contractors and answered countless questions. We issued five addendums for this project, five. So what you see before you is what we believe to be a very realistic project number with, I mean, with the probability of us requiring the use of a contingency, in my mind, is very low, less than fifty percent. So, based upon, based upon the work that we've put into this and the close, close to the pin, if I can use the, the, a golfing analogy, I think we've done, we've done a pretty good job and are presenting you with a realistic project that will be done with high-quality work, competent workforce, and completed on time. So, I would just like to direct your attention to all the, the figures that are highlighted in green. Obviously, they are the recommended-
You're talking about this sheet here?
That's right, this document here.
Yeah, they have a bigger version.
Yes. Oh, Dana, you have, you don't have color?
Yeah.
Oh, how bad, I like it.
No, they're all just larger. It was just too hard to see in that small sheet.
And then the far column on the right are the estimates, which you may or may not remember from previous discussions that we've had. I want to draw your attention to the, does it, I can get through the nitty-gritty, but I, there's a couple of things that stuck out to me, which I want to draw your attention to. In the, obviously, the big, the lion's share of this project is going to go to the primary for HVAC, which we are recommending ABI Mechanical. Hurst Mechanical turned in a, a very thorough bid. However, I don't, I don't have the same level of confidence in the labor number that I've basically had to extrapolate from them as I do with the ABI mechanical number. ABI is also a union shop, which means that they're constantly training their workforce, and they are, I, I believe, a good, a good choice. The other, if you look in the estimate for that labor number, I have a million-two-fifty. My million-two-fifty here includes some of that sheet metal number and some of the insulation number as part of labor. So it's not necessarily a gross overestimate as you might think. It, the seven-fifty-four, for example, includes roughly six-hundred thousand dollars worth of sheet metal labor. And the ABI mechanical number, six-hundred-and-one, includes about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars worth of sheet metal labor. So those two figures typically would get added to, they were part of my initial estimate. Does everybody understand that? The other piece of information that I would like to point out is that my equipment number is, is about half of the size of the other two. I am fairly certain that, or I shouldn't say fairly certain, but I have a strong belief that the numbers here include some increase in exchange for the markup that you would have otherwise paid for down here where, where the county to allow the mechanical contractor to purchase those big boxes. So when you compare my figure with the actual cost of the equipment, it's, it's right, it's right in line where we expected to see. Our estimate was for just, just a little bit less than two million. And the other thing that I wanted to point out too was the hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars that's basically we're, we're going to be charged for building out that mechanical space. That number is large because of the fact that we were concerned about what may happen once we break the concrete and put a condensation drain down below there because of a prior or an existing leak that was mentioned to us by maintenance staff. And so we wanted to make sure that we had enough funding in there for that number. But as you can see, the remedy that we, when we come up with a remedy for that, we're going, we're going to simply cap the existing lines that are down there, which is now not going to cost a hundred-and-forty-nine thousand, it's going to cost more thirty, thirty thousand dollars. Okay? So those are those wild swings there. Second one, the second contractor we'd like to recommend is Shoreline Power Services. We've worked with them on the law enforcement center job. They are a qualified local company who put in a, a bid, even though it says not specified, I had extensive conversations with both firms, and I feel like they have done their thinking as far as, as far as what, what is included in the bid from a controlled labor perspective. We don't have any power service that we're adding here, so the number is roughly the same as it was at the lack, which is nice. And I wasn't sure in my estimate at the time as to whether or not those numbers would be, would just be bigger because of a shortage of, of labor opportunity for, for this contractor. So my estimate for this work was four-hundred thousand dollars. And as you can see, it's coming in roughly at two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars. Testing and balance, one might say, why, why wouldn't you consider Pro-Mech Engineering Services? It's just because I don't, I don't trust that, I don't trust that number. I think that the number would end up being higher ultimately after they completed their work, or we would not end up with work that would be reliable. And the analysis, the quality of the analysis and the reporting that Kevin Heikle's firm, Integrity Testing Balance provides, is, we're getting really good value for that price on, in the green column. The next number that you see is an adjustment on the contingency. Based upon the discussions that we've had, I feel confident in lowering the cost, or lowering the, the amount of the contingency that sits out there, and I don't believe that we'll, we'll have a need for it. I've had discussions with both of the primary contractors for mechanical and explained to them that there will be no change orders approved for this. This is a hard ceiling that you're dealing with, so make sure that you have accounted for every dollar that you might need. So, based upon our, our track record, I feel pretty confident that the number that you're looking at will be less than three-point-six million at the bottom, will be probably somewhere between three-point-four, and I don't want to promise you anything, but I, I've made, I've made a firm stand with the contractors as far as what the cost is going to be for the project. Have you, have you considered this, have you considered this? And they, we're all, we're all on the same page.
Let me talk about the bid process just for a minute here. So if you look on your sheet, you have a bid sheet here. And obviously, we have the right to add, modify, reject or accept any or all bids. The deadline was Friday at three P.M. One company, Hurst Mechanical, the driver got lost. He did not get here at three. I extended it to three-fifteen. It says the bids are open three-oh-five, probably was a little bit later, but it was between about three-ten and so forth. But none of the bids were open until he submitted that bid. So it'd be one thing if they were open and then the bid was submitted, but I chose not to open the bids. We didn't start the bid, opening of any bids until about three-oh-five or a little bit later. So I just want you to know that, in case any company comes back and says, well, that bid was not submitted on time. We picked the deadline date of three, we did not say it's going to be open right at three o'clock. So I just want you to know that. They were a few minutes late.
Yeah.
Because the driver got caught in traffic on number twenty-two or somewhere.
I understand.
Yes, you understand, but I just want, if that is brought up by anyone, I think that's a decision we make, it's not a legal mandate that, so, but I just want you to know that, that one of the bids, Hurst Mechanical, was late in submitting their bid, just a few minutes late. They were personally delivering it.
I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Go ahead. Yeah, Commissioner, sorry.
How many people actually walked through and, you know, vendors walked through and how many contractors, you know, obviously, we got, you know, how many responded? And there were, my understanding, there was more people that actually looked at the project but did not submit bids. Was there any feedback on why they did not?
Yes, yes, I had several of them, and you may have a feedback too. And I was kind of disappointed it's only been bids, because we had a pretty good turnout, but this is what I was told by several contractors. They are so busy and they are committed for the next two years. They would love to bid on this project, but they already have jobs lined up, up to as far as twenty-twenty-two, some of them. And therefore, they cannot add another project and still beat our timeline. That's the common response I got from the people. I don't know if you want to expound that, if you got a different response, but that's the same thing.
I would say that, yeah, that principally, we had extended, there were three, only three mechanical contractors that walked through. There was actually a fourth here, but he was only here to look at sheet metal, not as a primary. So the three that we had, that was the gentleman that had said to us that he's too busy, he can't, he wants to, but he, he, it was, it was a timing issue. They received awards on two other projects, which kind of put us out of the box because they don't have the manpower.
Well, the big ones is Lewin Public Schools, they're doing a major project there.
Yeah.
A lot of the local contractors are tied up with that, which is a good thing for them. But the, as soon as the RFP went out with the schedule, the deadline dates, some company says, thank you, we'd be interested, but we just can't meet the deadline.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The Hurst bids two-hundred thousand dollars less, and you said you weren't comfortable with it. Are they, aren't they a good company, you know?
They are, I just don't-
You know, from my- You know, from my feedback was, they're a good company.
I don't have any problem with Hurst Mechanical whatsoever. They're a wonderful firm.
So why, for $200,000, why would we not go with them?
Because I believe that ABI can do a better job, a higher quality, better, more thorough. It's what the project deserves.
Aren't we paying you to make sure they do a good job as project manager?
I believe that the quality of their workforce and their staff in comparison to Hurst for this project is better. I'm not going to...I don't have anything negative to say about either firm, because they both...but based upon the number that I've got here for labor, I don't think that that number is sufficient. I think that they're going to need more money. They'll be into a contingency situation. Which is something that I'm hopeful we won't, hopeful we won't need.
Is it $200,000 right there? You know, if there was a problem with the company, then I would say...
I don't...we don't have any problems with Hurst. I don't have any problems with them.
Commissioner Lotner.
I'm...excuse me, I'm not really familiar with Hurst, other than in the last few years I've seen their trucks around.
Formerly Arbs and Cole. They purchased...
Do you want to provide a little bit of background? John has better, greater experience.
Because I know ABI is forty years, maybe better in this area, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Go ahead. If you could just share a little bit about your experience with them.
Well, I mean, I do engineering work in, you know, both Hurst and ABI bid on these projects. For me to...they are both qualified. You know, I mean, it's a sensitive topic to talk about, different companies and what their capabilities are. I mean, I do feel, as Kirsten, that ABI will be in a better position to provide us this project. It's not because somebody is less qualified. It is...I think that the majority of the Hurst people are located in Grand Rapids. That's where the majority of their people are. And not that they can't bring people up from Grand Rapids to do the work up here, but ABI has their workforce here in northern Michigan. And it's...may it be a small point, it's still something that is, you know, it's enough to say tip the scales, I believe, for ABI.
Both of the firms are privately held, but Hurst is based in Grand Rapids. So if something were to go wrong with, you know, staff that are assigned for this project, we may have experienced delay. And because of the size of the firm that Hurst is, you know, they may feel like that labor number that they've put in there is, or the labor number that they've shown us or provided to us is sufficient, but I...based upon my experience with the building in the past six months, this is going to take a long time, and we need to make sure that the people that are here are qualified and experienced. So that's how we feel about it, right?
Yeah. This is only a recommendation. I mean, you're welcome to...
Yeah, it is a recommendation.
Commissioner Lotner.
When we get to our bottom line, are you recommending that we look at the total project cost non-contingency or the total project cost and include contingency?
It's your decision, but I would believe, for a project of this size and scope, and for the amount of time that we estimate that it will take in order for you guys to remain occupied and providing services out of this building while we complete the work, it's smart to have a contingency. It's a lot like an insurance policy, Commissioner Lotner. We may never need it.
Right, about that. I was leaning towards, obviously, trying to budget for contingency, just in case. But and then how are...how does...we would then go forward and would you write the contracts with these companies as we go?
Our legal counsel.
Legal counsel. So in the very end, like the last so many percent would be, you know, held until total completion of the project.
Yes.
Well, that's what Hurst would do. We don't pay off until everything is finalized.
Right. And that's an interesting way to segue into part of what John's discussion was prior in that the equipment purchase can be facilitated via purchase order and wouldn't come due for a period of 15, 12 to 15 weeks from now. So from a cash flow perspective, that's $574,000 that you can get started on a project and not have to worry about until the delivery takes place. There is going to be some mobilization that's required because in the interim, while we're waiting for that equipment to be delivered, we expect to be able to construct a mechanical room. And just about the time that we're finished or near completion with that, we expect to be able to start installing chilled beam and baseboard, based upon the timeline that we set forth. So it's kind of a careful coordination of all of the activity, which is, which would also touch on the comment I made about the labor number. We really have to have the labor budgeted properly and properly thought out. If it means that you put eight people in or 10 people on, on staff or on a job for two weeks instead of six people for three weeks, that, to me, is a whole different set of considerations. And I just believe that, I just feel like ABI has done more thinking in that regard, based upon the questions that they've asked me and the comments that were made during public walkthroughs and so on. So...because it can spiral pretty quickly, you know, if you don't have your labor force kind of budgeted, almost on a monthly basis.
Would that not be their issue if we sign a contract, but no upfront system of dollars and no change orders? Wouldn't that not be their issue?
It would be their issue, but...
But could delay the project here?
But based upon the fact that we're making a recommendation, I believe more strongly in the numbers that ABI provided.
So, I mean, that's, when you're talking, you know, six people for three weeks, that right there, you're talking weeks delay.
Could be.
You've got 10, you know, 10 people for two weeks.
Could be.
So, and that's what you're saying, that spirals down until finally you're not getting it done when you need to be done, you're a month, two months late, and we're in the Fourth of January, and you don't have heat.
Right. We can't afford that, so...
Right. Yeah, and I think that's what you're addressing. And that's a common problem that happens on jobs.
Another option we want to consider, and several commissioners have asked about this, and that's why I asked Gary O'Connor to come here. Yes, certainly Gary's not going to make a recommendation one way or the other, but the question has been asked, I'm finding with Gary, about our current situation, how many heat pumps we allow, what would be the cost to replace them, and can we just, for lack of a better word, piecemeal this project over the next couple of years and just repair things as they break down? So Gary, you want to come up here?
If we're done with them, I would like to hear from both Gary and Gary.
Yeah, that's my...
But I don't want to shortchange the process.
Oh, no, they're going to be for last, Gary.
But if I could mention that idea, just my, as a designer, as an engineer, the type of system that we have, the heat pump system, these heat pumps will...they have a life. They have a reduced life compared to a more conventional, maybe more closer to what I've got designed. So you could be certain that within 15 to 20 years, you will be replacing these heat pumps, every last one of them. And if you want to say this is an expensive project, that you can say, we're going to replace all of the heat pumps this year, this is the first year. In 15 to 20 years, we'll replace them again. And in 15, in 20 to five to 30 years, you're going to replace them again. So in 30 years, you will replace all of these units, right? And that's $3 million roughly.
This is exactly, it's exactly correct, but what has never been really mentioned is the infrastructure of the support equipment to the heat pumps. What that simply means is the cooling tower, the lines that go with it, the pumps, the mixing valves that go through the heating rooms. And that's why it's a major concern, because even though we're seeing a lot of heat pump problems, we're also seeing some pump problems. And in fact, you would have seen these bills come by recently, because I've already had two pumps that have failed, various coolant issues, we're still losing pressure. So that's why I say, in addition to that, it's not just a heat pump replacement issue, it's the infrastructure that feeds that. And that is a major concern. Let me say this about that. If the cooling tower goes down, which is deteriorating, the entire building will go down, because those heat pumps rely on that. In winter time, if the boilers go down, but fortunately, we have a backup for that, but we do have pumps, and if they go down, the building goes down. So that's why it's so important to explain everything that's going on. It's not just a matter of, excuse the expression, tit-for-tat replacement, it's the other stuff that supports that. Hope that answered some questions.
And Gary, currently, you have five units that are defective?
To the point where it is not economically feasible to replace components. Because where they're located, the difficulty in getting to them, and the confined space dangers, meaning when you're using a torch, the flash points of the oil, they have to come out of the ceiling to do it properly. So at that point in time, it's cheaper to replace them and put them back in, and then, you know, repair what might get moved out of place to do that.
But it is possible, and I think you told me, and help me if I'm correct, to replace them with a new heat pump, not repair the ones that are broken.
Correct.
But to replace them with the labor parts, materials, everything, about $12,000 to...
Fourteen.
Twelve to fifteen.
There we go.
For you then?
Yeah, that's a good, generalized ballpark price.
And right now, there's five that are malfunctioning.
That is correct. And we kind of witnessed a storm cloud here in this area, about four o'clock here. We had to reset these heat pumps.
It feels humid in here right now. I don't know about you guys, but...
Anything else, Gary, that you'd like to...
I'm sorry?
Anything else that you think...
No, unless anybody would like to ask me any questions. Yes, sir.
If we pull out a heat pump, replace it with a new one, the new ones will be more efficient than the ones that you're replacing, I assume?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily?
No, because they're using the same ECM-type motor, the same energy efficiency. It's just the refrigerant has changed, and if there was a replacement to go in there, it would not have any of the dehumidification coils or equipment that was originally specified for these. So you've got a lot less components, but oddly enough, they're going to cost more. I know, isn't that strange, after 13 years?
Any other questions for Gary?
No.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
So, okay, I think the other question would be on, you know, you just don't feel that ProMac with $23,700, you know?
I don't think they carefully considered the amount of work that's involved. There's 36 exhaust fans. Those are all going to need to be balanced. And I just, when you start to figure out the hourly rate that they're paying their people, I just, I don't think that they carefully considered their bid. I think they lowballed the bid. Not that that's a bad thing. I mean, they're a respectable firm. Full disclosure, I went to high school with most of those people that were in, that worked for the firm, that owned the firm. And I just don't think that, you know, I don't think that that's the true number. I'm afraid of that number.
So I guess, you know, because if people bid low, then they, and you tell them there are no contingencies, you're expecting that you won't get, you won't get the job done anyway because of the lowball, or you're thinking they're going to come back and say they have to have more money, but you...
I don't think that you're going to end up with a properly balanced system, is what I think, which is not going to be good for this building.
Right.
That's where I think it's going to suffer.
Okay. So they'll say it is, but they really haven't done all their work?
Yeah. I think that the value of this job is very close to what Kevin has, you know, I budgeted $100,000, because I thought literally that it would take every bit of that, maybe a little bit, maybe I'm 10% high than what I initially thought it. And when Integrity's number came in around $70,000, I was very happy, very happy. And frankly, I expected ProMax to be closer to Kevin's.
I can tell you from experience, I had a situation where the building was a different project. We thought we had a building balanced, it was a lower bid. It turned out, we kept having problems and problems, we couldn't figure out why. The contractor came back and says, no, we did everything fine. Turns out, they did not balance the building properly. And we had to bring in, actually, Kevin Heckle and his company to fix a problem, because it was not fair. We were thinking, not knowing how critical balancing was, that it had to be a contractor issue, had to be a mechanical issue, it just wasn't working properly. Turned out, everything's working fine, it was not balanced properly. So I can tell you, it's critical to a project.
And we bid it as primary, because we need somebody who's objective to come in and kind of oversee or provide a review of the work that's been done. And typically, if they can't get their process done, they are a huge push in helping a project get completed because of the fact that they can't get a mechanical contractor to come back to, you know, refit some ductwork or something. And it clearly squarely rests with the mechanical contractor, I mean hypothetically speaking, but you need somebody who's a third party, that responds directly to you, that can come in and provide some technical expertise and say, this isn't right, it should be doing this. So it's nice to be able to have them kind of as a check and balance, yeah.
No payments are made until the building is properly balanced, the final payments, that's pretty standard. And contractors know that.
I think one thing that we have to remember is we get what we pay for. And we've been down this road once already. We got what we paid for in the beginning. And I don't see that, I don't think we should make that same mistake. Personally, I have every confidence in the three people that sit before us, that they have our best interest in mind, not only financially, but for the product that we're going to end up with. I have full confidence in them and their abilities to lead us in the right direction. So I'm going to thank you for all the time that you, and all the hard work that you put into this. And for me, I'm perfectly comfortable with going with your recommendations.
Thank you, Commissioner Lotner.
Just thank you. I would echo that, because having sat here and being on the side of being very uncomfortable with the contractor that was being selected, and watching a contractor I was much more comfortable with, knowing it was reputable, knowing the employees were as talented as they were, and knowing that's the way we should have gone, I also don't want to see that repeated again. And because here we are, and we shouldn't be.
Commissioner Anzari.
Are we in discussion now, or are we still...
Well, it's both. I mean, it's really...
No, I'm going to wait for discussion until they're done with their presentation.
As long as you have no more questions, we're finished, unless you have any comments? Brian, do you have any comments?
But you'll stay to answer any questions.
Of course.
You're going to stay here.
All right, so then, yes, we're in the discussion phase then. There's no other questions. Go ahead.
We're faced with a choice of paying out $3.7 million with the contingency. For that amount of money, you can spend $100,000 a year forever and not spend as much as we're going to spend on this. If you want to replace a heat pump, we got five, replace all five, you got to... If you want to replace a heat pump, we got five, replace all five, you got a, uh, a cooler that we know, you know, is going to have to be done at some point in time, schedule it. There is nothing in the current system that's an emergency as of today. And we could spend a hundred thousand dollars a year forever and fix what's currently here and for half the money, you know, on a cash flow basis. So I'm, you know, I, you know, I am not convinced that we need to spend 3.6 million dollars for a problem. Yes, there is a problem, we need to address it, but we have a cheaper option of replacing those heat pumps, schedule a new cooler, schedule, uh, a boiler that, you know, for the peripheral heating that should have been installed when the building was built, it wasn't. We could do it a lot cheaper. And there's nobody, you know, this is not a life and death issue as of today. Nobody's dying out there. Yes, there's people that are not very comfortable, but if we were to fix those heat pumps that are out of, out of whack right now, we could save a ton of money. And I just cannot justify 3.6 million dollars. I just can't do it. That's my two cents.
Mr. Shulz.
Let me ask a couple of questions because you're, you know, you're bringing up a logical point. If, and I guess I'm kind of addressing this to Gary. If those heat pumps were replaced and the cooling system when it went kaput, would it address the original problem we were trying to solve here in terms of the function of the system and comfort of the employees working within this building?
Baseboard heating was an issue. Um, windows, perimeter.
Yeah, come on forward, Gary.
You've got, you've got some pointy hearing.
I have to have the record also, so.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that. Uh, baseboard heating was an issue. The drafting from windows, especially the perimeter of the walls, uh, that would still have to be addressed. Um, yeah, you're talking about replacing all of the heat pumps. There were certain areas that weren't quite covered with heating and cooling accurately or adequately, you should say. So I don't know if that answered your question or not.
It kind of sounds like, no, it wouldn't solve the problem entirely.
No, it would not. No, it really wouldn't. And that's based on, um, this job was assigned to me October 2nd of '07. So I've been, I've made notes of all of what's been going on and situations like that. And like you said, you adjust things, uh, and Kevin Heiko is a, a big help, uh, throughout the years, taking care of issues. But like you said, there are certain things that just didn't get taken care of or covered or airflow wasn't adequate enough into certain areas. So no, the problems would still be there.
Actually, Commissioner Anzorri was conservative in his estimates. I just simply did the math, 3.6 million. John says he's getting 2.8% on his investments, approximately. All right, good, 2.5. If it come out, we would have to spend about a hundred, 232,000 per year, we would have over 20 years. I mean, that's your point.
That's my point. You know, we could go out and address the cooler, address the boiler, so we have perimeter heating, you know, address those things and do it in a spaced fashion so that we don't have to spend so much money upfront. Schedule it out, we're going to replace this many heat pumps, we're going to do the cooler when it's appropriate to do it and just schedule it out over the upcoming years and, you know, even if you spent, you know, yeah, you know, it would come out equals 200, over 200,000 dollars, but you know, if you budget 150,000 dollars a year, you could still get everything done and not have to go out and borrow a bunch of money.
Second half of my question.
Go ahead.
So, so the second half of the question is what would be, say, we stayed with the old system, then what additional costs, what would have to be added to make it solve the problem? We're not, we're talking about the heat pumps, you're talking about the cooler, but it sounds like it's the baseboards and you said there are areas where there wasn't sufficient heating supplies put in. So what are we really talking about that would have to be done if we stayed with the old system?
Well, as, as this engineering group took a, um, a survey of the people and their comfort levels at various times of the year, that's already documented. So that, each one of those would have to be addressed, uh, in accordance to what it would take to make it right. But going, uh, doing the baseboard heating, all of that would still have to go out for bits approval and things like that. So, yeah, you've got quite a bit there. And then you, you look at the boilers and if that's deemed to replace them, that's another situation. Um, yeah, so like you said, we're kind of in a, a funny area here.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Sure.
Just, I, and I, I understand, I don't like, but I understand your position. Um, but each of these times, if you were to do it piecemeal, even on an annualized basis, you have to go out to bid, you have to go through the process, you have to collect the bids, you have to do the walkthroughs, you have to hire an engineer to do the design because trust me, nobody will just take John's word for it. Besides, if this solution isn't going to be the ultimate solution, somebody else is going to want to draw it up. So you're going to have professional fees involved each time around as well. So even if it is only 232,000, it's a lot of time that comes out of everybody's, you know, your, your agendas, your, you know, it, it precludes you from actually doing some of the other stuff that is in your five-year strategic plan or in your strategic planning. Because it will, if you decide to, you know, make this part of every year, carve out some time for it, carve out some of the treasurer's time, some of the maintenance staff's time, um, and you're going to have to hire engineers every single time because you probably won't be able to replace a, a cooling tower without somebody drawing it up. So those are some of the unidentified costs that may or may not exceed 232,000 per year. Just to let you know.
Commissioner Riddick?
Um, prior to my return to the board in, in this past January, I think that the decision was made that we wanted to go ahead with this project. And while I understand the Band-Aid idea and just trying to cobble things along and, you know, do that, I, I, I feel like we've spent all this time and, and made the commitment, this is our biggest asset and we need to invest in it. Um, I'm comfortable with this, the way that they've come in. And I'm also a person that doesn't like being in debt and I think that there's some sort of hybrid financing that we're not going to jeopardize the finances of the county, our taxpayer dollars and that, um, I'm respectful of what you've provided to us and I'd like to just go ahead with the project the way it's, with them laid out.
Commissioner Lauder?
Thank you. I really appreciate where you're coming from and, and that's an option that I, I tried to embrace, um, early on, but with previous conversations we had in this boardroom and in conversations that I had with Gary and Jerry outside of this boardroom, I, it just really doesn't sound like it is feasible, like whether the pumps are going to hold up, whether they're still going to do the, the work they're, they're going to do and much as I would like to just say, yeah, that's a whole lot better idea because I tend to do that wherever I can, I just don't think it's feasible. And, I mean, and, but you can tell me that, that's not right.
I know.
It didn't sound like it earlier, but is it doable to just limp along? You've, you've mentioned yourself and, and we see your bills come through.
Yeah.
Um, it seems to me like we would, we would almost have one person contracted alone just to be doing this and that's going to be most of that by the time you pay out that.
Well, that's just bringing it up because Mr. Rundick remembers when we interviewed for services last time, we actually wanted to enter in a contract with DMW to assign a person here. We thought it'd be cheaper to do it that way, long-term, than to pay the hourly rate. DMW did not want to do that because they make more of a profit, very shortly, assign different people. But we actually wanted to go to that partnership that way for that reason, because there's always work to be done here.
Yes, sir, there is.
Commissioner Russell?
I, uh, we spent a lot of time on it and, and I, uh, I don't want to patch up the system for the next 10 years and, and I, I want us to borrow as little as we can and do the job right. And I'm comfortable with what's been presented. I wish we could knock off that 210,000 and go with the, uh, with the lower bid on the, uh, on the Hearst, but I trust your judgment on that. But I think it's time to figure out for the treasurer and the county how we, how we do it the most responsibly and move forward.
Based on all your comments, let me suggest this, based on today, I agree that we can make a decision by July 31st. If you want to proceed, you can authorize me to enter into negotiations with the recommended company, have our legal counsel draw up the contracts, have, give guidance to person to come back with specific purchase orders for the equipment and give John authority to proceed with the financing. Pick a special meeting right now, probably the last week of July, so we can finalize this. Hopefully by then, John can answer the very specific options. You can have all the equipment purchase orders be very specific. I think you'd want to see that in advance before you prove anything. And that way, I can start a process with legal counsel to draw up the contracts for the recommended providers. Does that make sense? If you do that, you really don't need a motion, you just tell them to do it, but we do need a special meeting date before July 31st.
I, I need to make sure that I have the authority to, can we, can we communicate with these firms?
Yes.
That they've been aware of this.
Well, yeah, because I have to work with them to get the legal counsel.
Sure, okay.
It doesn't commit us, but we have to make sure that.
Because I got to take their, their people off the street so that they work with this project instead of another one.
I, I guess, I, I would have to say, I, I agree with Tony. I just think that if, if we can take 235,000 a year and spend it on this heating system, we can get the baseboard in, we can get those things in, but we just have to pick the projects out as we go along. I mean, I know it takes a lot more time, I know it takes a lot more effort, but if it was, if it was my 3.5 million dollars, I'd leave it in the bank and let that pay to fix things up. And we still have this thing ever and if, if we do get an, because I, I really am opposed to us borrowing money in order to, to fix up the heating system that we already have. We're going to be throwing out, you know, 80 furnaces that are working in order to put the new system in. And as, and as much as, as I'd like to put in a new one and I, you know, I think that, that was really my intent when we looked at all this, I just think that, you know, we, we, if we don't have the money, we shouldn't be going out to borrow it to, to replace five furnaces. I mean, if we can replace those for 70,000, you know, then that's what we do for now in that, and, and we try to build up the funds to see if we want to go forward with 3.5 million. I mean, we, we won't lose this engineering, we won't lose it all and it's just hard for me to, to, to spend money that we don't have. I, I, I just don't like that myself.
The one thing I, to soften the idea of spending the money, you're saying 230-some-thousand a year is what?
That would just be the interest on it.
Cost of the project, sure. But if we were to say change out, there's roughly 100 units and let's say they're 10,000 dollars to change them out, you're going to be spending 3 million dollars in 30 years and that is 100,000 dollars a year. You know, so you're, if you go this route, you will be spending 100,000 dollars a year.
On heat pumps?
On, on just the system to replace heat pumps alone. And, and so really, you're looking at 139,000 dollars extra a year is what you're going to be spending i- instead of the 239. You will be putting 139 away, not 239. So I mean, there, you will be spending close to 100,000 a year.
Right. And I think we, we do almost right now, you know, between repairs, replacements and all that.
Sure.
We're talking about eliminating that because you won't have to, you don't have the maintenance costs, definitely.
But, I mean, if you're talking, I just want you to understand, you're talking about 139,000, not 239,000 dollars a year.
Right. Well, so that's less than what we, you know, what we would get on interest, you know, if you're talking 100.
Certainly, certainly.
That's, I mean, so, so I'm saying right now, we're spending, I don't know, one time I looked at it, it was like 108,000 a year on maintenance, repairing the machines, replacing them and all that. I mean, we can spend twice that and still have our 3.5 million dollars. That's, I mean.
Yeah, that was based on 20 years, not 30 years.
Okay. So, I mean, but that's, that's my.
And for me, um, I can agree with every comment that was made by every commissioner. I myself don't want to see us go in debt. That's a nightmare for me. However, when I listen to what John said, John said his investments right now are producing If we can finance for the same amount, it's kind of a wash, okay? Currently, we're spending on maintenance, I don't even know what that figure is off the top of my head. Is it 100,000 a year that we're spending on maintenance?
I think it's about 108.
108,000 a year.
100 years when I last, I went through a whole bill.
Well, are you referring to maintenance or repairs?
Both.
Because the maintenance contract is different, of course.
Well, okay, repairs.
Yeah, because you would see that.
So, to me, to jury-rig an old system and get by, with future problems down the road, we don't know what, um, I just think it, in the end, it will be a wash. If we can get the right kind of financing and we plan this out financially, I think we would be better served to put the new system in. Um, it's all going to hinge really on what John can tell us going forward, I think. But when we look at what we're doing currently and with that idea down the road, I, I don't see the repair bill going away until the system is completely replaced because I think continually we're going to be replacing, updating, repairing constantly. If we go with a new system, we're going to eliminate that repair cost. If we can get our interest rate to the point where it's a wash or almost a wash, I don't know that we could be in a better situation. Interest rates are low right now. Um, I would move to, move forward with the project at this point as long as we can get the right type of financing.
Commissioner Shulz?
There has been a lot of good comments and, but I would agree. Deb, what you, what you just said was running through my mind. If we get the right financing, I think moving forward with the project, I respect the work that you've done for the law enforcement center. I mean, I respect your judgment very much on the recommendations. You've clearly put not only thought, but a lot of experience into what you're suggesting, which is what we were looking to you for. So to me, if we can move forward with a system that's going to work and eliminate the problems, not having a crystal ball, knowing what problems might pop up that we aren't even thinking about with the old system, it just is, puts everything in a better, better light for employees and hopefully with the right financing, it becomes doable and not a burden on our taxpayers either. So that would be my position.
So based on comments, if you wish, Commissioner Rundick, I would appreciate most of them authorizing me to proceed with negotiations and develop new contracts with ABI, Sterling Power Services, Integrity, Test and Balance, and then to work with person to develop purchase orders for the purchase of the equipment. As I was.
Commissioner Russell?
You're so moved?
Second.
Do you want to speak to that at all?
No.
Commissioner Anzorri?
I do believe a new system would have lower maintenance costs, but you are going to have maintenance costs even with a new system. In 10 years, I don't, I don't think anybody is, expects those controls to last forever, every, every piece and part, don't think. every, every piece and part, don't think your maintenance costs are gonna go away entirely for the next 20, 30 years. There will be maintenance costs, you know, and I'm not, you know, I do believe it will be lower, you know? I do believe the system design is a good design, and, and, you know, our maintenance costs will be lower than what we're currently experiencing. They won't be zero, is the final point.
I agree with you.
Commissioner Wilson.
I guess my question with the motion is, is this contingent upon what we find out financially, or...
Well, at some point, we will, the next thing would be pick a day for a special meeting.
Okay.
At that point, John would have to come back with some very specifics, because all you're at, others now...
Is just preparing for that next...
Prepare the documents. John, I mean, he doesn't need your authority to export this option.
Right.
I think you have a pretty good idea of what they're looking for, right, John? So I'm thinking if you approve this motion, then, because this is a regular meeting, you can approve a special meeting sometime in the future, but John then would come back with all the financing options. At that point, hopefully, you can approve the contracts, you can approve the purchase order, and John can give you specifics on the financing, you can give John specific guidance on the campaign or beyond. So... Commissioner Reddick.
Well, I just have a question about the financing, because, I mean, if we go ahead with cash that we have available now, that we've budgeted this year, um, do we have to go ahead with financing, um, at this point, or, I mean, can we wait until, like I was suggesting, until like October or something, and then, because I think that, you know, it's possible we might be able to work it out. If we tighten our belts a little bit, you know, I'd rather wait till last minute, Dan, to try to borrow money if we don't have to.
I think it's prudent to exercise and do our due diligence to figure out the financing. When we execute, it's up to you.
Yeah, I could tell John, assuming the bond counts to be done, I think they can, it's not that complicated. Let's say we meet July, whatever. John can come back with a full proposal, but even if you say yes, it's gonna take several months to get to that point where we actually sell the bonds.
Right.
So it's still gonna be, even the best-case scenario, you're probably looking at October. And by then, we'll know where our financing is after this year. So either way, it's gonna take a process.
And what they had planned was, we were gonna spend one, we had 1.5 million to spend initially.
Right.
So that would cover, I would believe, most of the cost up, up to that, up to October, maybe.
I don't think that, I don't think our mobilization cost will be, it may be right around a million.
Yeah, it could even be less.
So, so I think exactly what you're saying will be the scenario.
Let's say you don't have to make the decision right now.
Right, right.
One other point I would like to make is, by the time, by the time we get to that point, we're gonna be through our budget process, so we're gonna have an opportunity, as Commissioner Rittenbach suggested, that we start to tighten our belts a little bit and, you know, see how much of this we can pay for upfront.
Commissioner Anzor.
Assuming John can get, I don't wanna wait to July 31st, you know, if, you know, I would like to get a little bit of feedback from John to set that date. I don't think it'd be prudent to wait until the end of, you know, the very end of July.
No, by then, I'm saying John will have all the answers.
Right.
Now, we're not, I'm gonna say, don't make sense of that. John, I think you know what they're looking at. You can start tomorrow, talk to...
I've already gotten all the information that I need as far as general bond. What we are waiting on is a banking institution person, private placement, under credit, and that I will get to you next week. So that...
Yeah, we're pretty confident we can get this violated until...
Everything else is straightforward, and it is what it is.
Um, we had tentatively a budget meeting for the 23rd of July, I think that is...
It'll be canceled.
It was canceled, but I'm just wondering for this next meeting, would we be prepared, and are the other commissioners available on the 23rd?
Uh, we have an airport...
On the 30th.
Is it the 30th or...
It's 30th.
Okay, the last Tuesday.
It's the last.
Okay, yeah. Uh, probably a week would not be enough time, I would say, what's, I don't have a count, do you have a...
Yeah, it's the 25th is the, is the, like, Thursday, we can just hit July.
Yeah, no, I'm just looking here, yeah. Uh, don't you have some conflicts?
I have to be in Chicago for my daughter's college orientation.
How about the 29th? I'll be the 29th?
Yeah, I would be available by...
Morning?
Whatever time you...
I'd have to do afternoon.
Early afternoon?
Potentially.
I'm available the 29th.
I'm pretty confident we can just post this.
I'm available the 29th.
Yeah, I'm just, are not, are not...
You were looking at the 31st, that's not a good day for...
Well, that's the drop dead day.
Well, we picked that drop date, Deb, but...
Oh.
I mean, that's, we agreed internally, that's the drop date, just to get it done, so, the 29th, 30th, or 31th, we have airport at noon, so we could meet in the morning.
Yeah.
On the 29th, on the 30th.
Morning wouldn't work for me on the 30th.
I'm sorry, would or would not?
So would not, on the 30th.
Okay, 31st.
I could do 31st.
Yeah, 31st is open.
So Wednesday?
I have beta in the morning.
Afternoon? 1 o'clock?
What day are you talking?
31st, Wednesday.
Would, the 29th in the afternoon work?
I have a 4 o'clock, uh, obligation, but I can do it until, I can do it any time.
Well, I'm guessing it won't take that long.
Yeah, I've got it, one at 2.
Oh, that'll be tough.
How about Friday, the 26th?
29th or...
Kirsten's on...
Oh, she's gone, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I could be available by phone.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think...
On the 23rd, but the 24th, then not gonna be around.
I like, it's good to, well, I get the legal contracts done, and have their attorneys, other companies looking at it too, and everything, so...
We have a budget meeting on August 1st, uh, at 12:30.
We do.
And how long is that meeting gonna last?
The first one will not last long. If you remember traditionally, we give you the information, the books...
Right, so what I'm wondering, if we can coordinate that meeting on August 1st?
Actually, we could schedule a meeting and have the budget department meeting.
There you go.
We could schedule a regular meeting to take action on this, and just talk about the, the first budget meeting. Would you agree, Michelle?
Yeah, it will be, but I don't have a lot of staff left on August 1st, so if there's any way you can meet the 29th, 30th, and 31st, any of those three days, it'd be just a lot better, but...
Well, this is, I'll be blunt with Michelle, she's planning on being gone. I told her we don't need her the first budget meeting. Jen and I can handle it. Really, as you remember always, we give you the book, we just review it overall.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
It's usually the first one is pretty short, so...
That's why I suggested that.
Since all of you are available, and Michelle can stay camping, so the motion will be that Michelle cannot attend the meetings also.
Okay. Was the 31st okay?
What was the 30th in the afternoon?
I, I don't know, you guys...
I have beta in the morning.
No, we have the airport commission on the 30th.
Good afternoon?
The afternoon will not work for us.
I'll afternoon.
Oh, yeah, because I have two...
Two minutes on the case.
Yeah, we should talk, we should pass the motion first.
All right.
Pass the motion first, then look at things, thank you. That's why you're the chair, bro.
I mean, does everybody understand, you know, we're voting for him to do the, the contracts and get this set up, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes 5 to 2.
Okay, now a meeting date.
The meeting work, I, I, since that we have everybody available on the 29th, you couldn't do it in the morning, but you could do it in the afternoon.
I'm, I'm...
No, I think Patricia had something.
Yeah, and I'm trying to get my, I apologize.
Patricia said she had a...
My phone is going out, and out of business here, so...
I suggested the 26th.
Oh.
I can be, I'm available on the 26th.
I've got the 29th up.
Well, we have, I need to...
20th in the afternoon and the 29th?
I, I was gonna tell 2 o'clock on the, at 2 o'clock, I've got a meeting on the 29th.
12:30 on the...
Oh, what about, what is... No, 29th I can be here.
First thing in the morning on the 29th would like...
I'm sorry.
What was first thing in the morning on the 29th?
That's open for me.
Like...
But I thought you said you couldn't be here.
I, I could, I would have to juggle some work, but I could maybe do early.
I have a doctor's appointment at 8:30 that day.
So if you did it at 10, would 10 work?
Mm-hmm.
9.
Well, she couldn't make it by 9.
No, I can't make it by 9. But I could do late afternoon on that day, the 29th.
She has, but Patricia has a conflict.
Okay, what, what was the conflict for the afternoon of the 30th or the 31st?
Actually...
The 30th airport for Deb will not...
Okay, so the afternoon and the 31st?
It'll be all day.
31st is, is open for me up until 6.
That was the airport?
The 30th.
No, the 30th is the airport.
31st.
Okay, 31st.
It would have to be afternoon, it would have to be, we usually go until about 12:30, sometimes 1. It depends.
On the 31st, pardon me? On the 31st we're talking about?
Yes.
We could do 2.
Yeah.
Or can we do, or can we do like 4?
Well, it could, if you do that, why don't you just combine it, do the next day, save your all trip.
Yeah.
Right, goes back to the first. You have a meeting scheduled on the first.
Let's just do it on the first.
At what time Michelle's at first, I can't...
Budget 12:30.
So if we just do it 12:30, schedule as a regular meeting, do this and...
Schedule it as a special meeting.
Yeah, schedule as a regular meeting so you can take action.
Instead of a workshop.
Instead of a working, and just do the budgets part of it.
Okay. And...
With the contingent that Michelle cannot be here.
Okay, we would adjourn our meeting and just...
No, no, just have one, because it's just...
Oh, okay.
We have a special meeting, two things on the agenda.
Okay, got you.
This, plus a review of the proposed 2020 budget.
Okay.
But we won't take any action on the budget.
Yeah.
Correct.
So are we, is it 12:30, Michelle?
It is 12:30.
Okay, if we, if this is a regular meeting, Michelle, so we don't need a signature as long as they pass the motion?
Well, this is a special session.